Steve, do we have a second?
I'll say.
All those in favor?
Uh-uh.
Lou?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is certification close session pursuant to subsection 2.2, Title VII, 12D of Code for Virginia, 1950 as amended. Each members of the Board of Supervisors upon roll call certifies that to the best of their knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Confederation Act, only such public business matters that were identified in the motions by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the Board of Supervisors. Any member of the Board of Supervisors who believes that there was a departure from the requirements shall stay so prior to the vote indicating substance of that departure and his or her judgment has taken place. Are there any supervisors who believe a departure has taken place? Being none, if you agree to the matters heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting pursuant only to the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, please signify by saying yea or yes. Tim Lovelace?
Yes.
Luanne Wallace?
Yes.
Carl Ray?
Yes.
Steve Brady?
Yes.
David D?
Yes.
Boris Christian?
Yes.
Rebecca Dot?
Yes.
Ma'am, your referral turned to regular session.
Thank you. All right, at this time, if we will stand or if we can remain standing, we'll pledge rights. Thank you, dear Lord, for giving us another day. Thank you, Lord, for the blessing that you've bestowed upon us today. Lord, use us with our hearts that we can't afford you to not. We ask that your presence be upon us and help us to lead and guide and direct and make the decisions that are best for our community, our citizens. Make known that your great love is what will help us making these decisions. Draw our hearts together so that we will be a community in one with you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
The allegiance three to five of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the business where liberty and justice brought.
All right, at this time, I'll take a motion for the agenda for the night.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make two or three changes to the agenda. We need to add an item number 11 after, under request, that will address letter support for a grant to the Department of Housing, the Timberland Platten Housing Authority in the county for the Workforce Housing Project in Danes. So that would be item number 11. Item number 12 would be to discuss a change in December board meeting to reschedule it to avoid the conflict at Christmas parade. And number 13 would be to add an additional executive session after we complete the rest of the agenda.
That's the end of the meeting, okay. So with those three things added, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Stan, all those in favor?
Uh-uh.
Lou, can you read? Can you hear us okay?
Fairly, but yes, on aye.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor of this change to our agenda? Everybody's aye and Lou follows it in. All right, the first thing we have now is a presentation, Kirby Mettis, I understand Kirby, what will be here, Andy Sebilla? Well, this will be for the Russell County Planning Commission.
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you, Board of Supervisors, for giving us a few minutes of your time this evening. My name is Anthony Smith, I'm Board Chair of the Planning Commission. Just a quick couple of things. As far as approval of flats, our planning commission worked really hard to approve land divisions in the county, and we've worked for the last decade or more, I guess, with an agent from the real estate tax officials office. I understand that Crystal is, I guess, set down for the time being due to some concern, maybe overpaid or something like that. It doesn't really matter. For us, it's often handy for us to have somebody with the tax assistance office because they see the land divisions coming in, they know what's going on in the county, they're in touch, and they're accessible. And that's the main thing we need, is somebody that is accessible to the residents of Russell County when they're doing land divisions. Another thing with the subdivision agent, most folks are able to bring in flats into her office, and if they're exempt from our subdivision ordinance, then she can get up with one of our planning commission members, myself or Kirby, and we can sign it, and those folks can go ahead and report that flat and go on about their business. Without a subdivision agent, all the flats would have to come to our regular monthly meeting, which kind of slows down the process. If somebody were to bring a flat to our October meeting, let's say, and maybe it wasn't any compliance, and maybe redo some lines or, you know, clarify some things for us, then they would have to wait until the following November meeting. So that really slows things down. Before we had the agent, it was a very slow process of adjudicating all these land divisions from Russell County. And so having that agent is extremely important, I think, to the citizenry as far as getting things approved. And at our last meeting, and I want to read the matter here real quick, the October meeting, we had a great discussion, county administrator joined us, and we had a good discussion about what all was happening, but our board moved that you, the Board Supervisors, negotiate with Mr. Crystal Fly, who works in the tax assistance office, she's been working with us for a number of years, if you would negotiate with her for a suitable spot in continuous our subdivision agent. We think she does a fantastic job. She's kind of learned under Harry Burson, who had that job before her, and I think having that institutional knowledge is very important for us as planning commission members, and I think for the community as a whole. So that's kind of our recommendation, recommendation to you guys. Do you all have any questions?
Well, Mr. Laster has been over several times to try to see Crystal, and she's been out the last few weeks, but we are trying to work with Mr. Randy Williams, because she works under his office. So we have heard you, we are listening, and we are trying to work.
Yeah.
But she's been out.
Okay.
We'll get her holdover and work stuff out.
Yeah, I understand that, I understand that. So, you know, I just want to say that without an agent, it kind of slows the process, because most of the land divisions do come before us as the planning commission are exempt from the ordinance. And so that kind of slows a lot of that stuff down, and we don't have an agent to kind of help speed that process up. And I noticed on your agenda, when I looked at earlier, that there's one other thing that we as planning commission did talk about in our March meeting, and that was the GIS. I think that comes up later in your agenda, and I just want to maybe remind the board that as a planning commission, we did recommend to you, the Board Supervisors, waive all user access fees to the Russell County GIS system. And I think we talked about this with the county administrator a little bit, and I think the GIS system hasn't been updated here very recently, and we apologize for that, but I just wanted to refresh everybody's memory about what the planning commission did do back in March as far as the recommendation you guys. Does anybody have any other questions or anything to make? That's all I have.
Thanks for...
Thank you. Yes, sorry, Kirby couldn't be here. He has stuff going on, but if you need anything, just let us know. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Box X, what are we going to take when we place the official line?
We haven't been able to speak with her yet. She's been out from work. She hasn't been here.
I'd like to make a mention, ma'am, we consider that if she would accept it to any parent, except number one.
We have to discuss it with her. She has not been at work, so when she gets back, long as he's been gone, he has come over to see her enough numerous times when she wasn't there. So, but we will, we are working on it, and we will be sent to the point. All right, next is a presentation from Tim Addington and Melissa Parsons, the 911. I guess you probably...
Good evening. So, I'm adjusting for the mic, so...
Do you take that glass, or I can hear you a whole lot better if you're six feet away from me.
Thank you. So at least my glasses won't fall there, right? So I'm Melissa Parsons with the Department of Emergency Management, and I'm here on behalf of Tim Addington. Tim had a little surgery this week unexpected, so he's not only here, and he asked me to fill in. But I think we are here to follow up on a previous conversation about the transition to Next Generation 911. And I'm here to answer any questions that you all have. I know that the funding has already been awarded to Russell County from the 911 Services Board, so you have approval to proceed with the implementation of Next Generation 911, but there's also a participation agreement that is required and should be signed by November the 15th to go ahead and participate with the AT&amp;T folks to start the implementation of Next Generation. So again, my apologies for not really knowing exactly what I needed to show you, but I'm here for questions. Or if I need to go through the whole thing from beginning to end, I can do that too. So I just need you to tell me what you need from me.
Give us all...
All right.
...read the presentation.
Okay. I owe you both for this one, right?
I guess so.
No, no. So the Commonwealth of Virginia, across the state of Virginia, is changing our 911 system. It's currently an analog system. It's now going digital. The calls will be delivered to the 911 center through a fiber line, not through bouncing off cell towers, if you will. So those calls are going to start being delivered to the 911 center through fiber. The chosen vendor for the state of Virginia, and it was a competitive bidding process, so it's not, it's not in any way, shape, or form prepared for one vendor or another to provide this, what we're calling an emergency services network. It's all IP-based, and that vendor is AT&amp;T. Now, some may say, AT&amp;T, they don't have cellphone coverage in Russell County, right? Doesn't matter about cellphone coverage anymore, it's all about fiber. And the fiber will be ran to the 911 center by AT&amp;T. At two different paths to get those calls coming into the center in a more redundant and diverse way. This project is going to cost the state of Virginia around $60 million. Not all of that cost is going to be transferred down to Russell County, so when I say I'm from the state and I'm here to help, I truly am. We are funding a lot of these costs that come into Russell County. And I think on your slide, so if you can look at that line items, if you will, in the budget, there's a one-time $4,000 fee for AT&amp;T to actually start this work in Russell County. That $4,000 is covered by the 911 Services Board. There is the CHE, the acronym for that is Call Handling Equipment. That is the actual equipment that brings the 911 calls into the 911 center. There is $30,000 in that line item for any kind of upgrades, firewalls, I-3 licenses, things of that nature that may have to be completed prior to the deployment of this. That $30,000 is also a cost that we reimburse Russell County for, so that $30,000 is a reimbursement. Anything highlighted is a reimbursable charge. Text to 911, you all already deliver text. If there's any firewalls or upgrades that need to be done so Russell County can continue to deliver text messaging over this new fiber network, then we have allocated $30,000 for that. Now, we'll tell you across the Commonwealth, there's been about quotes coming in of around 27. I'm not seeing anything over 30. So that is a reimbursable charge to Russell County. There is a $1,000 charge that is already paid from the 911 Services Board to capture data that comes into Russell County 911 center. And this data includes all the calls that come in, the calls that were transferred, the calls that were not answered, the calls that were abandoned, whatever the case may be. We already have that in place in Russell County, and the board actually is already paying for that. What it did not capture at the time we started this project was the text messaging coming into the 911 center, and we have allocated $1,000 a month for that. The board gets directly billed for that, and you don't ever see that cost at all. So we're paying that. Diversity charge, so you can see there's a $43,845 dollar figure in this line item. That is a cost that AT&amp;T has said it's going to cost this x amount of dollars to bring this diversity into the 911 center. That's a cost that you won't ever see, that's directly billed to the 911 Services Board. So it keeps getting better. See, all this money I'm paying out, we really are here to help. The legacy 911, this is what century?
You had Verizon.
Verizon. So the $2,648 and 10 cents, what Verizon has said, we're going to charge the 911 Services Board to take Russell County off of what we refer to as a selective router. And that is the actual hub that Verizon has that sends these 911 calls to Russell County. And that we have to take them off of that selective router to get them onto this Ethernet, emergency services network. Verizon has said we're going to charge 264810. That will be directly billed to the 911 Services Board, you won't see that. So, and the monthly delta, I think if we scroll down to just below that, no, no, have you got the migration proposal at all? That's the participation agreement.
Yep.
I'll format that, no. So it should look like engine 911 migration.
Right.
There it is. Okay. If you wouldn't mind, just scroll to page 13 on that, please. So what we did for everybody in the state of Virginia, we went in, we looked at their piece app, we gathered information about the kind of equipment they had, we, AT&amp;T drew a diagram of how those ads are going to run into the building, from the point B mark that AT&amp;T stops to the point that fiber needs to come into the building, and that's how we came up with these costs. We actually went in and gathered information from the 911 center itself. And you can look on this, it's the same dollar figures, and it totals up to $111,49310. The monthly recurring cost, as it was when we did these proposals, and I haven't seen a recent copy of your phone bills, but we'll get that. Currently, Russell County has to pay Verizon around $1,283.68 to get those 911 calls delivered to their 911 center. With this solution, when you all get onto the Next Generation 911, that's going to go from that $1,283 or whatever the current is now to $5,566.60 per month. Sticker shop for sure. Because we know that this is a legislative mandate, everybody has to go on this new 911 system by December 2023, and we know that it sounds like an unfunded mandate, it always does, and we know that we didn't give you all time to prepare for this $5,000 extra or $42.82, $92 a month extra. For a period of 24 months, we are going to reimburse you, excuse me, for the month, for the delta between the two. Sorry. Maybe I need my water. So... It's hot between the mask and the talking.
I'll find you some water.
There's some water there.
It'll be just fine. Just take it down.
This is a side effect of chemo, by the way. This cough and taste.
Oh, God, bless.
Anyway, thank you so much. Thanks, I appreciate it. So because we have come in and we said, you know, you've got to pay this x amount of dollars, we're going to reimburse you for 24 months from the date of deployment. So if Russell County gets on the Next Generation 911 network, let's say, December 2021, two years from December 2021, we will reimburse you on an annual basis for the delta, which equals $102,7908.
I got a question.
Yes.
What sort of redundancy do you have in place? As far as like, is it a regional type redundancy throughout the counties in southwest Virginia? When in regard to communicating by county and then how those circuits, how those circuits move back and forth, or is it just a standalone system just for those counties?
No, it is all throughout the entire Commonwealth of Virginia.
So it'll reach throughout the whole country?
Yes. So in essence, if Bo's sitting in the 911 center, and he takes a 911 call that should have been, for whatever reason, Virginia Beach, he's got a one-button transfer, he could send that call to Virginia Beach. And as you dial 911 now, you get, you know, your caller information, your location, your caller name and number. When Bo would transfer that to Virginia Beach, all of that information transfers with it. Now, the redundancy and the diversity is the path into the building, and I believe there's a diagram in that.
There is.
Yeah. So as much as it's possible to do redundancy and diversity across the Commonwealth, we have.
Okay.
There are some places that do not have two different paths available to them. So what we do in that case, instead of having two different points of entry with the fiber, we do what we call carrier diversity.
Microwave.
And that means that Verizon will push it in from one way, and COGS or Comcast, yes sir. So as much as we can do redundancy and diversity across the Commonwealth, there are places that we cannot. Places like back in Highland County. Tazza County actually does not have a diverse path right now, but it doesn't mean that it won't happen by the time. AT&amp;T is working with other carriers to try to get all that diversity in. So it just depends on each network diagram and where they can frame the paths into the building.
I know, I mean, I worked for 911 since very baby, and very baby.
Right.
I just always wondered why, for the sake of cause, why they didn't create some sort of regional center and all that, moving to one locality.
I got you, yeah.
For, you know, as far as the burden of expenses to taxpayers, especially with the economy, the way it is and stuff, but we got great outstanding people, and we need everybody we got out there because they do... I called it Sunday on my way to church, because I seen a homeless person walking in St. Rose, so, and they took care of it immediately. You know, so they're very valuable. I'm just wondering, with all this technology and all this regionalism being preached, you know, why there's not a hub right here that we could centralize it here in Russell County and just take care of six, seven counties?
And it can be that.
Community.
Community.
Big one.
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah.
And that's why I want...
Yeah, I mean, I'm just asking, I mean, I'm just asking the question. I don't know, it just seems like with the way technology's going and the expense of it.
Right.
You know, we're part of a lot of other things, like industry development companies coming in and stuff like that. I'm just asking, because I know it would provide a lot of jobs, you'd have to have a lot more.
Right.
But what money you could save if you had more people out on the road, for protecting in-school resource officers and stuff like that? If you could save more money here, you could be able to hire more people here to do these other jobs. And we're trying to look at pulling from one to the other to try to accommodate everybody.
It is. It's a very...
And I'm just asking, I mean, it's...
It's a very sizable thought, and there are a lot of regional centers. So like, I've covered the Roanoke area.
Yeah.
And Montgomery County, Blacksburg, the town of Christiansburg, Virginia Tech, and one other went in and developed a regional 911 center. So it is doable anywhere, you just have to have the money to, you know, like Bo said, communications, you've got a lot of terrain over here that you don't have in Richmond, and you have to get it.
I know, we've both talked about it, I'm hearing that.
Yeah. It, you know, it goes off... As a citizen of the Commonwealth, I would say that that's the best thing you could ever do.
Oh, I know.
Is consolidate the centers, you know? We do, we do provide feasibility studies to go in and see what the feasibility is to build those 911 centers. Because you're right, costs, costs do go down because you have five counties contributing to one center. You have more jobs because you have to have more people coming in.
Well, I mean, and, you know, I know Sheriff D, you know, he's looking to hire police officers all the time, trying to get new people trained in, more areas to cover in the county, more school resource officers, we have to fight those battles, either getting a grant or coming out of our own budget. I'm just thinking, long-term, it could be something that maybe could look at long-term or short-term down the road that says how would this fit? I know all the sheriffs would have to, and Bo and all these directors would have to kind of come together and say, you know, what's this look like?
Right.
As far as saving the taxpayers.
Right.
A million dollars each per county, or whatever it may be, I don't know. But I know there would be no eliminated jobs because you'd have, you could take that savings of money and put those people in some fairly newer positions to accommodate some of these other things. I just thought I'd bring it out, but I know I've talked to Bo about the communication side of it.
Yeah.
He does an excellent job, and I mean, I know the terrain and stuff that we deal with all the time could be a thing, but I know we have a partnership with Tazza right now where we microwave them in back and forth, and I know that technology is still very viable on 1 gig or, you know, surface, you know, on the digital side. So I know we have all these landfill sites on these high elevated areas that we own in the county, off-site of the landfill, you could put it on landfill, but I've always said that you could put a tower off-site of the landfill and almost reach five, six counties with my league, you know, just to have that redundancy. I guess that'd be my only concern, if you had immediate fiber break and it shut down, where are you going to, where are you going to hook to, or where are you going to link to?
And that's, that's why you have two different paths coming into your building.
Right.
So if it shuts down one side...
It's going to go the other.
Your other side, it's going to default over.
I think we're blessed here to have that ability to do that.
Absolutely. And two, you have to know that, like, if something happens, God forbid, but if something happens and it washes out your 911 center, Bo's going to have the capability of logging into a portal and rounding those calls immediately to Tazza or Washington or whatever the case may be. So it is going to build a more diverse system. Across other parts of the Commonwealth, you know, not everybody was text to 911 ready, so kudos to southwest Virginia because you all were accepting text before it was a mandate. So great job, all these things are long.
Yeah, we have, we have a good job.
And, and, you know, finally, somebody realized that we had to start accommodating our hearing and speech impaired folks. We have to allow them the same opportunity to reach 911. And everybody texts, you tell your grandchildren texts. If I didn't text my grandchildren, they'd never answered the phone, you know? So we recognize that too, but, but there are, it's a good discussion to have. Of course, you've got two governing bodies, or three, or four, or five, that have to agree and come to all these good terms and stuff, but we, Tim and I, can provide information to you as time goes on to see if it's something that you're interested in.
I've talked to Tim quite a bit.
Yeah.
Tim's been there.
He is, he's been, I've known him for a lot of years, so it is something that I'm a proponent of, but...
Well, I just got to bring that out, I just think that it's something that our whole region as a whole are going to have to look a little deep into.
Right.
Not only that, I mean, just budgetary-wise, financial-wise, saving the taxpayers money, I'm continuing to put burden on them all the time to have to... If there's other solutions to, to it for everybody, I think conversations need to be had. I mean, some people just don't like having those conversations, they're afraid that you want to do a way of this or do a way of that. I don't think we're a proponent to do a way of anything. I think we're a proponent to make things better, life easier, lower taxes for everybody, you know?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, and it's, you know, you've got plenty of places around in southwest Virginia that you've got the land to build the big center, and there's grant money somewhere, I'm sure.
Bo's a fine place.
Yeah, Bo's a fine place, yeah. So if you live closer to me, then I'm not going to work there. No, so, and I do the basic dispatch class at the Southwest Academy. I'm an instructor on there, not employed with them, but volunteer with them as an instructor for dispatchers. And you have turnover, we used to have one dispatch class a year, now we're having two with 20 and 30 people in those classes because of the turnover, because of the pay, because of the, you know, and if you pull a bunch of resources together, you can bring that pay up and you have more...
That's what needs to happen.
Yeah.
It sounds to me like this is a conversation we need to have with a couple of adjacent counties over the next couple of years while we're being subsidized.
Right.
So we can look at that one year when we have to bear the burden ourselves.
And because you can look at, like, the cost increase just for Russell County, albeit it's a lot, it's way, way more in some other places too. So it's kind of, and not just northern Virginia compared to southwest Virginia. Some of the higher, the folks in the back in Highland area, you know, they're getting a bit, they're getting a big hit of this, but you're taking, you're taking a random cellphone tower hit to get a cellphone call and making it more based on geodiverse locations.
Right.
It's more specific. If I'm standing in the middle of the river, this thing's... It's more specific, if I'm standing in the middle of the river, this thing's supposed to tell you if I'm on the Russell County side or the Washington County side. If I'm in the river, just send somebody, I don't really care who responds, but you can get that technical with it because it's all based on road center lines and address points and who wants to get wet and jump in the river.
Right.
Now, this contract that you all are writing off of is Fairfax County contract. I'm assuming your legal books have looked at it, your procurement folks have looked at it too. So that contract is good for 10 years from the time Fairfax County signed it, which was in 2017. So by the time you get on it in 2021 or 2022? Third quarter, okay, third quarter, 2021. So by the time you get on it, you're already five years in, so which means you've got five years left. So at five years, that price that I just told you about, you're guaranteed not to exceed that price in five years. In five years, it will be up to you all to determine whether you want to renegotiate with AT&amp;T or you want to. If there's somebody else that provides this emergency services network, feel free to negotiate with them. But right now, nowhere in the nation is anybody interconnected with AT&amp;T. And that's the, that, it has to be interconnected in order to work across the Commonwealth.
They're trying to complete that work everybody.
And you have to know too that, you know, you've got fiber coming in, you've already got good fiber and stuff already in Russell County, but you've got more fiber coming in, and right now, while that fiber is exactly for nothing but 911, eventually it's going to expand.
Right.
There's going to be ways that you can jump onto that fiber for other things. I mean, it's not going to be one fiber that they never, ever do anything else with, it's too much money.
Right.
They are going to have to put up, you know, possibility of putting up some more cellphone towers across the Commonwealth. Like Floyd County is getting eight cellphone towers. Well, you know as well as I do, if you've got a cellphone tower, the chances of you picking back in a radio repeater off of that cellphone tower are pretty good.
Oh, yeah.
So then that expands your communications, and your communications gets expanded and there's your tops for building probably a regional center. We're agile with those.
Any one else have any comments or thoughts?
Yeah, let me just take up some more of Melissa's said. The board supervisors has, has, has worked with the sheriff department, we've upgraded their equipment, which I have seen, which we've got grants for that. And the sheriff's department did a real good job on this. We also, on this one, I had to contact and Bo, Tim, we had to ask for extension on this grant until November 15th. This is only good until November 15th. Due to the COVID, we were going through the meetings and we finally got it to where we could extend. You've got to remember, this is a $214,000 grant for us to transition in the right direction. It will not, it's almost like some of our projects, it's not starting until 2020, 2021. Yes, thank you. But this is putting in a system like, that will, like Melissa said, this will go 10, 15 years out. This will, this will partner, it'll be, it will enforce, it will also strengthen what equipment that we've done, what we have put into the new sheriff's 911 center. So this is just another leg in putting this system, like she said, this is going to be a very powerful system that Russell County has. Actually, it's probably one, it will be one of the best of all seven counties in Southwest Virginia. So, but I apologize, we only got to November the 15th to make a decision on this. This is a $214,000 grant, they're going to pay for the first 24 months, so.
You need a motion?
Yes, ma'am, yes, sir.
I'll make it. What you want to make, go ahead.
I'll second, I'll second the motion.
David, what's?
Boris, David.
What, what's your motion, what you'll say?
I want to approve, make a motion to approve this grant.
Authorize signature.
An authorized signature.
I'll say.
Any comments, any discussion? You don't have any thoughts? Mark, all those in favor of approving the motion to accept this $214,000 grant for the new 911 system? All in favor? Aye, anyone opposed?
Thank you all.
Thank you, Melissa, thank you, Bo.
All right, the next thing on our agenda is the approval of our minutes for our board meetings. Our first was our regular meeting October the 5th. We have a motion to accept the minutes for our October 5th meetings. Carl, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Boris, any discussion? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Lou, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, now we need a motion to accept the minutes of our special call meeting, October the 27th.
Make a motion to approve this meeting.
Steve, do we have a second?
Second.
Tim, any discussion? All of those in favor of approving those minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, next thing is the approval of our expenditures for the month, payer bills, do we have a motion for that?
I'll make it.
David, do we have a second?
Second.
Boris, is that you? Oh, Carl, I'm sorry, Carl. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All right, the next item we have is our committee appointments for the co-hog road commission. Currently, Tim Love likes to serve on that, and this is for a four-year term, do we have a motion?
I'll make it.
They have that for a four-year term?
Second.
Boris, and a second by Steve, any others? Any discussion, all right, all of those in favor of Tim on the co-hog committee?
Aye.
Next, we have our citizens' comment period. All right, the first person we have is Steve Franklin. So if you'll step to the podium, give us your name and address, please, for Vicky to get.
Would you mind if we all speak at the same time, if we're all going to speak on the same topic, would that be okay?
Pardon?
It's your decision, Matt Shatter.
Well, it's usually it's a three-minute, can you?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think we can.
Okay, Steve, if you'll give me address, I'd like to stand, please.
This way, this is 6088 U Road.
U Road, all right, Castlewood.
Castlewood, yep.
All right. Pardon? Yep, and next?
Teresa Franklin, same address.
Okay, Teresa. And I have.
Nelson Hayes.
Nelson Hayes.
486 Banner Corner Road, Castlewood.
And, 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 I'm going to give all this to Vicky, she has to have this. All right, well, good luck, and then Jim will get you, sir. Okay, go ahead.
Well, we were actually, and we appreciate y'all taking the time to hear us on this. There is a lease agreement with the Clinch River Little League, which we, we don't have a problem with that. However, we have been, our kids are not part of the Little League, mine's not, but she does play. We live in Castlewood, two minutes from the park. And the gates to the park are locked, and I spoke with Lillian about this in some extent. She asked me to speak with Bob Savers, who is the president of the Little League. I tried to do that and he refused, he said he was not discussing it with me and actually hung up on me. But we want our kids to be able, as Russell County citizens, she did verify that tax money goes into the Little League. And we want our kids to be able to go out there and just practice, it was just my husband and my daughter. She has to make video to get, you know, she's got college looking at her. And we go out there to make video and things of that nature so that we can send them when they request it. And he locked the gates and will not open those gates, he said the property belongs to the Little League. I have a contract here that, you know, they wrote with him and they say it renews every 10 years. He pays a dollar a year to, for rent, is what it says. But I just feel like, because we do pay taxes as well. I was told that, you know, we could go to Dayton, or we could go to Cleveland, and I'm like, we live two minutes from this field. And I don't understand why that our kids, we don't ask to use it when Little League is in session. We would not expect to take, you know, priority over Little League. But we would like for our kids to be able to use this field to, to practice, to, you know, make video for colleges so that they can, you know, get scholarships to go to college. But he refuses to open the gates to let them use it even when Little League is not in session or having games or even in season. And we have tried to discuss it with him to see if he would let them use it, and he refuses. So we came out today, I know, you know, with this agreement, you know, I don't know, you know, what can be done as far as him allowing us to use it, but I do know that according to this, it can be terminated with only a 90-day notice. And I just feel like if we pay taxes and we live in Russell County, that our kids should be able to use these fields and have full access to them when Little League is not in session. But he refuses to speak with anyone about it, so that's why we're here.
This is not asking to use concessions that he has there, we're not asking to use lights. There's just a couple hours of daylight is all we're asking for. I don't see where the problem could be. He's totally against anybody doing anything besides Little League. My daughter plays on a travel team, I was on them just for college exposure, there's nothing against anything either. I could just get her in front of better college coaches there. And we have to put work in outside of what she does though. So we have to travel to Cleveland, to Dayton, but I have to just, it's a five-minute walk from my house. Less than two minutes and a half, it just doesn't make any sense.
Well, I'll, I'll tell you this, I've run into this situation at Homeacre. And I went down there and met with the board and had a pretty deep conversation because I coached down there for years and I'm fired. Participated with all the kids. But I told them, I said, this ain't about us, it's about the kids. And you can't restrict because there's too many days in the week, too many hours that they can work together to let these people access these fields. Now, when I was in Little League, we had eight teams, now we're down to one or maybe two. And why is because people wanted to get, they wanted to travel, they wanted to see more experience, they wanted to get your kids better. And they weren't getting it at the local level, I'm just being honest, straight with you. And we need to have the ability in Russell County, in all of our county fields, to let people play and participate and open the doors to those, whether they want to watch our hit sun or frove sun or, or you can't restrict. I, maybe personally, I think you cannot restrict it just to one organization because you're hurting the kids. And not anything against Little League, because I was in there for 25 years. And I won six district championships, went to state six times with some really good talented kids, but it was about the kids. And I had people, kids from Loudoun, Richlands, everywhere come and play, and I wouldn't play for me if they didn't have a place to play. So my personal feeling on this is that no gate should be locked when it comes to opening those things up for our children. And work it out, just communicate and say, hey, look, Little League's only there for so much, so much time. And you can actually work around those practice schedules and game schedules because they usually only play on weekends. But if you look at the way Little League's been doing now, they're playing the interleague. So if Homeacre travels to Coburn, they're not there at Homeacre. If Coburn travels or Castlewood travels to Homeacre, then you all could be practicing on those fields and have those availability and have, have access to those, but. And I know, I know who you're talking about, only personally, you know, I consider, I've, I've unfired and worked with Bob and different ones in this Little League program, they've been doing it for 50 years. And, but you can't keep doing things the same way.
No, we're not here to hurt Little League in any way, what.
Well, I know that, yeah.
Well, my issue is, is why do we have one team in the Clinch River Little League and they have five fields within three miles apart? They have the same whole Little League field, they have three fields behind the fairgrounds and they have the senior league park. Why do you need five fields for one team?
Well, I've always said that if you look at accommodations that we have in the county, people shouldn't go to Nautar Park every weekend to play ball.
Right.
I mean, they shouldn't go down there and spend their money when they can spend it right here in Southwest Virginia. Now, you all, I, I traveled and I played in Knoxville, they'd send me 25 miles down the road to the Lox.
Yep.
I don't, nobody heard that. But, you know, we took a wolf and we went down there, and you came out of the racket, you came back to the, to the field. I told Steve and different ones here, we've got accommodations right here in Southwest Virginia. If you open the doors to these accommodations, you'd have kids coming, once this COVID deal's gone, you'd have running to hear about the busload to have these travel ball tournaments.
And that's great revenue.
And it's great revenue.
Travel is the future, Little League just has to accept it. Travel is the future for the children, they're going to play travel ball, they're going to play better competition.
And the parents are going to.
More exposure, they're going to bring in more revenue. It's just, I mean, you've got to be able to move with that, and it's time to move. But we can't be restricted from using the facilities.
Well, I, I don't want to sit here and just tell you.
I'm playing on all of them.
I've made the plan before, but I'm just going to be honest with you, I mean, it's, we need to open up our facilities in the county and we need good, strong leadership. I don't want you taking your daughter outside there, I don't, I hate that.
We, we want to bring them all in here, we want to.
I mean, you know, if we could host that, now that we've got Ball up here at Southwest Virginia Community College, we have all this ball going on.
Right, why do we need to recruit from Northern Virginia when we could recruit our own hotel people?
But I, I, I'm sure.
And that, and that's why, that's why I'm here, and I'm sure that's why they're here, is we're bringing it to you for a resolution that's going to be beneficial for everybody, not just going to be one side.
I'm, I'm agreeing, I'm agreeing with Logan again.
I mean, we're, we're restricting a lot of kids for 10 or 12.
I mean, to be honest with you, I've used this field for the last four or five years on downtime, I guess you'd call it, when nobody's there. There's actually a sign on the gate when you go into the parking lot, and I just, like, dust till dawn or whatever, you're not supposed to be there, I understand that. So we're going out for an hour and a half, two hours after she gets home from school, when I get home from work, you know, just to, keeps me out of trouble growing up, you know, she's.
I'd rather have her on that field any day.
Yeah, right.
Well, and to be honest with you, Norton City Fields, Little League invited her, they said, you can come out here and warm up and practice on this field. And I'm like, that's shameful.
Well, I'll tell you, I'm a member of the Homeacre Greens Club, we have a pretty good athletic program. We may have played in the Castlewood this past year or two. We took money out of our own budget and helped them get their basketball program up and running. Because it wasn't just about, it was about all the kids.
Everybody.
And, you know, it worked out great, we all stayed together, we traveled to Castlewood and played, and they came up here and played. Because we want to keep our kids in Southwest Virginia. But now, I'm telling you right now, we're losing thousands of dollars, thousands of dollars going out here, going to Tennessee.
I want to be honest with you, I would spend roughly $500 a weekend.
That's when we don't have to get ready.
And that's, that's one figure.
I'm with you. I'm with you.
That's a lot of money, just a week.
I don't know, I don't know the legality of the contract or whatever, yet.
All right, does anyone else have any comment?
Leave me.
Does anybody else have anything to say? All right, thank y'all.
Appreciate you, Todd.
Appreciate you, Todd.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Jan? Is Jan with?
And if, and if we don't.
Joyce?
If, if we don't care just on, on the contract and on the Little League contract, that is a valid, a valid contract that not this board, but previous board gave to the Clinch River Little League. Now, one of the things in the contract is, and it probably is different than any other field in the county because it does have a contract. They, Little League maintains a million-dollar insurance policy on that, they have to maintain security, they have to maintain the operations and the maintenance. The county contributes as far as taxpayers' funding, very little to that Little League. Because the Little League maintains it, they bow it, we don't, we don't provide manpower, we don't provide very little funding. Probably the funding that we provide to that Little League to run those is probably would keep the lights on, so.
I think she said $4,000 there.
That is, that is correct.
So who, who funds the other fields in the county?
Uh, we do.
Okay, so why, why? Okay, so why, why were excluded then?
The, the other fields are open, the other fields do not have those restrictions because he has.
See, that's what I was wondering about because it states clearly in here that this contract can be terminated without any reasoning except for 90 days written notice by the league.
Right, yeah, we, yeah, we, we understand the covenants in it. Have y'all sat down with Bob and tried to work out?
We can't, I called him and he was very rude to me and said he wa, he was not discussing it with me and hung up on me.
And then as far as maintaining?
He uses inmate labor.
Maintaining, it's inmate labor, so let's make sure.
Let, let us get a little bit more clarity on this.
Yeah, right.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, I'm Jim Little, 1660 Copper Ridge in Castlewood in Tim's District over here. I'm going to try to talk as fast as I can in my three minutes. First, just piggybacking on what the previous speaker said. From a strictly tourism standpoint, as of 2019, athletics was the 12th biggest drawer of tourism dollars to a county. That's coming in to see high school games, Little League games, any type of games. The last report I looked at in 2019, it was the 12th highest. So that's dollars lost, you know, and people coming in. So I just went to piggyback on that and toss that out for what it's worth. I'll wear two hats real fast here first. I'm the pastor of the Churchill United Methodist Church in Hansonville. I just want to thank all the county residents that have used, we entered into an agreement with the school system and with Mr. Lovelace here to set up two Verizon hotspots of which students can come in, citizens in the community to do unemployment applications, job applications, et cetera. And our biggest concern from the church was what kind of mess would we have in the parking lot? And they've left it spotless, Tim, it's been wonderful, the job. So we appreciate both the young people and the residents of the county and we're just glad we were able to do a little bit there from our end. Quickly putting on, we're not really on for tourism today, but because we're coming up on the Christmas season, I'll put a plug in real fast here. First, I want to thank Heather who has become just a fantastic asset in the last year as our tourism coordinator, the grant chief in the right for us, the accessibility and Talonzo for support for us. Quick things that we've started, if you look on our Facebook site, you'll see Tuesday treasures and Friday features, which are local businesses that would relate to tourism, whether it were business to draw in, a place to eat, et cetera. Our first one was a place, antique shop here in town called Something Special. And then this past one, Rick Bostick's Place Farmer's Table up in Homeacre. And if you look at that, that just went off the board and hits there on the farmer's table. So we're pleased to be able to feature these businesses out there. The Facebook that we've balled into and spent some of our money on, as of about 10 minutes ago, we had 4,963 people that are following our Facebook site. We're super thrilled with that. I mean, you know, people are actually going on there and looking at it. We've got an app that in the process of working on that was paid with some of the state COVID money grant that we got along with. We had been and will continue to be, Heather can correct me if I'm wrong, Blue Ridge Outdoors. We're trying to spread more throughout the region. We've been in Blue Ridge Outdoors now one or two months and we're booked through the end of December, trying to advertise outside our region. We had a little over half a page this last time and getting good results, plus we were on their online presentation also.
Jan, I left a copy on each one of theirs that Rebecca has.
You've got that, you have the copies of them up there? Yes, everyone should have a copy of the Blue Ridge Outdoors to find it. Heather wrote up the articles, wonderful job again. We've also qualified, got, just got another grant from the state here, pretty much a leverage grant there. I think we've got every grant you've written you've gotten so far, haven't you Heather? Yeah, so I mean, fantastic job Heather's done in grant writing for us. We then started fundraising on our own to get into non-designated money that we could use for different things. And it was started with a anonymous gift of $500 donation, so it didn't come out of our line item, which we couldn't use, but still we got an anonymous on that. We've now profited, returned the 500 and profited over 800 just in the last two and a half months on that. I know that seems small, but we're making money instead of spending it here so far. And that's with all of our bills paid on it. You'll find back behind you there, we've done etching there, again, used a local company out of Castlewood, Farmhouse Designs that did the etching. And we've had to reorder on the mugs three times Heather, something like that already. I mean, they've been very successful and we're more than doubling our profit on that from the markup. Besides those, we've got a company called Middle Creek Clay that is doing coffee cups. If you remember, some of you have seen them already, it's a clay coffee cup. It's got the outline of Virginia on it with a heart right over Russell County with Experienced Russell on that. Those should be here in about two weeks that we'll have up on those as a fundraiser also. We've had a donation from a local individual that you'll find down in the art center here in the hall, if you walk up the hallway there, where we've got several pictures of Renee Hodges has donated a stretched canvas 16 by 20 that we'll be doing a silent auction on. And we've had a basket donated by something special that different businesses have been putting things in, we're going to do a raffle. So we're not just sitting on our butts there Steve, you know, I mean, you told us to do something, so.
I think you're doing an excellent job.
Thank you.
I've seen more activity out of tourism communities last year than I've seen in the last forty years.
Well, thank you. The, how that money's being used, we now have our brochures being distributed in five airports throughout the region, including Tri-Cities for everyone coming in on those. Yes, Ed. What now? You're eating with my three minutes Heather. No, come back, come back. What now? Right, Brandon, mostly over at the brewery, Los Pine Brewery, has got the glasses and is working with another program on that. Glasses are also available at the Appalachian Meats and down in St. Paul at Clinch Life Outfitters or in Heather's office if she doesn't keep losing room on so. But, but no, we, we'll keep ordering them and going great, like I say, five airports now we're distributing our information going out. We're trying to get our, they're working, Jeff Hess with VTC from up in Homeacre, I know David knows Jeff, working on getting them to show our video as part of the flip through at Tri-Cities Airport. So that'll be a good move for them to see. We did get videos done, four actually total, from Brad Deal and Preston Ball, Preston right here locally, Brad just over the county line. These can be pulled out if the IDA or anyone wants to feature a certain section, these are made so that you can actually pull out a snippet. We'd like to be put on your schedule maybe in February after you have all your officers in January and everything and present those to the public here maybe on that to see what we've got coming up. But we used our money to get these videos done. We had to purchase some music rights to go with them and things like that, but that's just part of doing the business there. We also gave out last year a $500 scholarship and we're all wanting to do the same against us here. Again, our brochures, we did 10,000 brochures and we've already given out over half of them. And then we did video presentations at all three high schools, of course, back before COVID did, at the Oak Grove Community Center, at the Drill Community Center. And I will go on record as saying the best food in the county's at Drill. Okay, I mean, those ladies can cook.
Rye dines.
Those ladies can cook over there. I put on five pams, I thought I was at church social here, you know, they were wonderful. Over at Castlewood and then the Chamber of Commerce and the Rotary. And then COVID basically shut us down on making these presentations. So that, I know I've gone over my three minutes, for that I apologize, but you let a preacher take the microphone, you're in trouble. So if we can do anything more, let us know what we can do. I applaud the committee that I've got working with me and Heather and the support from Lonzo and the support from all of you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jan. Thanks for opening up your church to the community and students and...
I'm sorry, what?
Thanks for opening up your, your church.
I'm hard to hear you.
I don't know why you're so soft spoken. Thanks for opening up your church to the community and students and for all you've done with tourism.
Oh.
Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else, audience, anyone else that wants to speak, public comment? Any else?
Chairman Chair, I have some additional information to present on behalf of the Planning Commission on the GIS. Would you prefer that I do that now or?
Public comment, give me your address please Dustin.
Dustin Keith, 211 Cedar Heights, Lebanon. Good evening, thank you all very much. I am Dustin Keith, I'm from Bristol, Lebanon, local Realtor and Director of the Southwest Virginia Association of Realtors and a member of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission have received several comments prior to March when we made this initial recommendation to you all about public access to the GIS. In researching this, we did have our agent Crystal White do some research and she did find that all of the surrounding counties to Russell do have free online public access to this service. And this service is a map service, it is an aerial, doesn't necessarily include plaques as a definite legal boundary of properties, doesn't, but it does connect maps to tax records. So currently, to use the GIS in Russell County, you must submit an application and pay a $150 annual fee to use the service. We were told that the annual cost to the county to host this information through contractor was $3,500. As you can see on page one, these are the minutes from our March 16 meeting when we approved a recommendation after hearing the presentation from Crystal recommending to you all that the Board of Supervisors waive all user fees for access to the Russell County GIS system. Since then, the board has not taken up that recommendation for consideration. You all have discussed the issue, but I wanted to be here also with Mr. Smith and answer any questions or clarify any, any confusion you had about the GIS. The GIS is an important tool for Realtors and other real estate professionals, but this recommendation would have the highest impact on the public at large and out-of-area peoples conducting land research in Russell County. During the pandemic, especially in the early months during the summer, when our rates were very low, Realtors across the region had dozens of calls from people out of state who were very much interested in moving to southwest Virginia to escape the high concentration of coronavirus in cities and suburbs. But think of the out-of-state buyer who was interested in purchasing property in Russell County. They weren't able to access the online GIS and start researching property because it was not available to them. But because the service was available in surrounding counties, if they were looking to do research, they would probably end up purchasing in a different county because that wasn't available to them. So because of this, you do have several letters of record of support that we were able to collect in just a few days. These span real estate industry, nonprofit, surveyors, other groups. And this will be a huge asset for us to continue doing the work that we do and helping people relocate to the region to increase our tax base. But also this is a great service that we could and should be providing to our county residents and to the public at large. Do you all have any questions about any of this information? Thank you very much, appreciate you guys.
All right, is there anyone else? Anyone else that wants to speak? All right, Senja, the advisor, citizen, commentary, constational officer. County attorney reports are requested.
Thank you, Chairman Chairwoman. There are a number of things that, there are a couple of things that I have looked at and very nervous about, which might be a close session after it's closed at, toward the end of this week, and I'll take that back.
Thank you. All right. The county administrator reports are requested.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First on the county administrator reports is of course the Russell County Cares Funding Summary, financial summary to date. As, as of November the 2nd, 2020, this is a summary of our, how Russell County has distributed out our cares funding. As you can see, the first, on the first line item, the biggest, one of the largest portions went out to each one of the individual towns, 839,000. Of course, we've had to also take care of the county operations, which included, you know, all the sheriff's departments and the county offices and treasurer, et cetera, et cetera. And that was at 1.57. The next one is the public facility safety modifications that we've had to make for decontamination equipment, touchless system, clean supply sanitation, meeting rooms, government facilities, and that has been 451,000. But one of the, one of the things that, you know, the Board of Supervisors, you know, should find a very, you know, very helpful to the community, thank you, there you go, is the business support recovery. Hey, right now, out of this funding, you know, Russell County Board of Supervisors has given over $427,000, you know, into creating, you know, small business grants and public spaces. So, you know, that's, in addition to that, also into our non-support, our food pantries of $160,000. But one of the best ones was our, our first responders to our fire and rescue and that we have given a total of $415,000. So again, we have given into the areas that are here to protect Russell County citizens, protect Russell County employees, protect Russell County first responders. So right now, end to date, and this to the end of the year, from down, from November the 2nd to the end, we have 551,006.97 remaining under the cares.
But we do have, what, 10?
Yes, ma'am.
10 rents, 10 rents to be in the process, we still have, they have not been delivered in the last...
Yes.
All right.
And next on the county administrator reports is the Russell County Transfer Station Staffing Report, that was all in your packet. Again, this is... Again, this is the disclosure statement that we're required to do in staffing at the transfer station, that takes care of retraction. It tells that we are meeting the DEQ and guidelines on what we're supposed to do at our landfill. As everyone can see, the, during the COVID, you know, the landfill has increased greatly. And again, I want to, you know, acknowledge that during our time for waste, our waste management people, sometimes that during these times, during the cold and the heat, they've been out there, you know, to take care of the disposal there at each one of our sites and at our transfer station. Next on the county administrator, county administrator reports is, of course, this is just acknowledgement that the Russell County Assistant Column of Attorney is going to be advertising for a position. We had one to leave the county, and we will be advertising it for, at the 1st of December. Next is, of course, the Virginia Service Training Officers Prosecution B-Stop Grant. This is the application, as you see in your packet. This is for a grant for $57,028. This is an application to the B-Stop. That has been done by the Sheriff's Department. The Russell County Sheriff's Office is requesting B-Stop continuing funding for a full-time investigator dedicated to the domestic violence and sexual assault cases. This officer will work with all domestic violence victims, sexual assault and victims during, during the grant time period. This is the application for you all's packet. Next on the county administrator reports is the Cares Act funding fast track broadband projects, what I'm talking about. So, in the meantime, with all the cares, that's one, one, the cares that was given to the county was to ensure that the safety of Russell County citizens and the Russell County employees. Second was, there was cares funding given to the schools to be able to operate, to protect our Russell County students and teachers. Now, this is an additional grant that has came down through that we, that came down through the governor's office, there's $30 million that has been allocated for broadband expansion. So, seeing that it came in Russell County, taking the care, taking every advantage that we can, we reached out to the Cumberland Plateau and our private providers. And as you will see during the application of these two projects, we are asking for additional services under this for an additional $100 million in broadband expansion within the services in Russell County. So, the first one is, of course, through point broadband. This is a, the total project to which is $199,645. And this, this has a three-mile of fiber construction, which has the design, the labor, and the materials. And this is the area of service, and I hope I can get it down to where y'all can see it, on Route 728. In addition to point broadband, IGO has also came in and partnered with Russell County Board Supervisors for a broadband infrastructure that will serve 40 additional households that will be, let's see, where is this one located at?
Clark's Valley.
It's Clark's Valley, thank you. My class is above, that's right. At Clark's Valley. So this is, this will serve additional 40 houses. This is also part of the packet. And the second part, which is, this also has the broadband infrastructure, which will be serving up through, in the Homemaker area. This will be a total of 184 houses that will be able to be served. So, those packaged, again, it's an application. We, it is a first come, first served. We have baited into phase two of these applications. There is only three phases. They have asked for additional information, which sounds promising. So, again, if there's funding on the table, Russell County is win after it for the broadband. That concludes the county administrator reports. Next is request by the Board of Supervisors, the Russell County Cares Business Grants. As you can see, and I just wanted to highlight what I had mentioned before, how we, we had given out this to our Russell County citizens, our Russell County students, and our Russell County businesses. So, of course, we give to the IDA, we give to Russell County all these businesses that we have listed, to the rescue and fire departments, and one of the things that I left out, of course, which was the food ministries, which we have given out $110,000 to our food pantries to take care of Russell County citizens, especially during this time. And the, where also the Russell County Board Supervisors are looking at and giving additional funding during this time, which you'll see on the agenda during the Thanksgiving coming up, and of course, Christmas, these are times, these are tight times, so we're going to provide every assistance that they can to Russell County citizens. Of course, the town of Lebanon, what they have given out, and town of Homemaker, to their businesses. We have pending grants, like I said, of over, you know, $210,000. But tonight, we have additional 10 applications that we have on the application, which I need to add two additional ones onto this, which is Compton Carpet and Kenneth Short, which is an independent installer with Folgeman Carpet. I need a motion for approval for 10 applications, pending approval for the, through the Cares Act by the Russell County Board Supervisors.
Sub move.
All right, here we go, second.
Second.
10, any discussion? All right, all those in favor, at least 10 additional ones that have just come in. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed?
Next on the county administrator request is, we're currently looking at, we have the Russell County Erosion and Sedment Ordinance. We need to set a public hearing date. I've got to request that with motion for the next board meeting in December. So I need a motion for, to advertise for a public hearing to, for the Russell County Erosion and Sedment Ordinance.
Sub move.
Second.
Second. David, any discussion? We will set that when we set our next board meeting. We'll do that, and we will discuss that, because we are looking at moving the next board meeting to accommodate our folks in retention. All right, all those in favor of the sole iteration, public hearing? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any others?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next, as discussed before, this is the annual, annual Russell County Board Supervisors Turkey Donation Program. Again, to assist our Russell County citizens that are in need during this time, the Russell County Board Supervisors have gone to motion, we dedicate $10,000 of our food safety money under the Cares Act to provide turkeys through our food pantries to the Russell County citizens. I need a motion for approval of $10,000.
I believe it. I believe it.
That's $2,500 for budget, that we budgeted was $7,500 for...
That is correct, sir.
I'm sorry, Carl, is that you, or Steve? Carl, okay, Carl, do we have a second?
Second.
David, any discussion? All those in favor of decreasing this to $10,000?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And next, I need, as part of the authorization, annual authorization for our part-time employees for, for being paid during the Thanksgiving and Christmas pay. It's, it's procedural movement, I need a motion for that.
Sub move. Second.
David, Steve, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next up on the Russell County Administrator Reports is, of course, as has been spoken before, is the Russell County GIS system fee. I have put into the packet the interactive GIS, there are talking points on this. Again, the system that we had, the Board Supervisors had requested that we look into a upgrading our GIS system that was very antiquated. It, it actually was on a platform that, that had IT issues last week. So, this system, we were running dual system, and...
I have problems, I have seen that all well, you can't be hoping.
It's like pens. He didn't know his, sorry about that. Again, the Russell County GIS system fee, this is interactive GIS, this is the same GIS system software carry that carries, that carries Worce County, Virginia. Currently, our platform that we're utilizing, as you can see in your board packet, can carry this platform, but it also has, can expand. As we move into the future, we can add into our water and sewer issues, our infrastructure, it can add in a lot of the emergency services as we add in, it can grow. Now, the fee previously, as mentioned before, was actually $32, $3,500. And this one with the upgrade will be $7,000. So, it, it carries a higher level of platform and better security, but that is at the board's discretion. So, that is the annual fee. And I want to point out, the fee that the Russell County Board Supervisors have been charging previously, we weren't making any additional money other than paying for the service itself, so.
Well, let me ask you a question, Lonzo. I don't know if anybody's looked at it or not, but a good trade-off maybe to look at, maybe through the budget, would be these houses that were selling off at the court out of state that we put back on the tax rolls. What kind of money is that actually bringing into the county since we started that program? Do you have a, just a rough idea?
Each, each sale will be different, of course.
I understand that, I mean, just, just an idea of what, you know, I ain't gonna hold you to it, I'm just wondering.
And you know how I love her, so...
I know, you're gonna wanna know the facts.
I've looked at, Dave, and it just, it does, it varies. The properties you think you can sell, you know, might be $500, might sell a lot, then a damn $500.
Oh, damn.
And I, I mean, it's just, it's kind of hit and miss. And that money goes back into the...
Treasure.
Back into fund, to the treasure.
It has to go, if that is the legal way, we have to do it by COVID.
I understand that, I'm just wondering from numbers perspective, without incurring more debt to the taxpayer.
I think $70,000 something we can look at in the, in the coming budget.
Oh, I do too.
If we ever, I mean, that's not a tremendous...
Is there a time limit on, on having to do that, or?
No, no, no. Right now, we're, like I said, we were in, running dual platforms. We've had a long relationship with the interactive GIS. For right now, as, as they pay $150, that will remain in effect until the board makes a decision to either increase it or to eliminate it. That will remain in effect. Where my staff, today, we pulled the, the new add-ons and the links for the new systems, and we'll be sending that to the existing users until y'all make a decision and once y'all, that y'all's question, what you decide to do.
I'm like in the planning commission, in a way, I think a good investment, you get a good return on the investment, but if you get people sometimes utilizing that service more and more, to do the research and stuff like that, and I know sometimes the fee, $150 just to be able to get access to it, you know what I'm saying? But sometimes, I know probably these counties are utilizing it for more accessible growth, because if they have access to that, and they can get in, locked in on it, they can move and clothe on property quicker, and they might hesitate. I know, I'm not saying $150 might hold somebody up, but I'm, they might hesitate, say, whoa, you know, they're charging me to get access to this, and, and they might have to do it by legwork, or phone calls, and stuff like that. So, I think accessibility to that technology is, could be a huge benefit. If we could afford to offer it at a free price, I think it would be in our advantage long-term to do that. But I, I, you know, you just have to run, the best thing, you have to run the numbers and everything, make sure that, you know, we can afford...
Could you just make recognition to us next board meeting?
Yeah.
I can, I can, yes, sir.
I, you know, for that amount of money, I'm inclined, just...
Yeah, I, I think we're gonna make it free, too, I'm like Steve. But I, I think it's an investment, you will get a great return on the investment when people have accessibility to high-tech opportunity, stuff like that. They, they log into it, they, and you can put that on your tourism platform, you can put it out there, that, you know, you have accessibility to GIS. Come look at Russell County, you know, and I, I think working with those entities...
I think, I think there's certainly some of these stipulations associated with, because those boundaries are nowhere closer to being correct, or just, just fit it on.
Have you tried out the new platform? Have you seen the new platform?
No.
It's pretty good.
It's, 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 like I said, yeah...
Yeah, but I, I know how they put those...
Yes, you do. You're an engineer.
I've tried to fit some of them together.
So, right, currently, right now, I will get back to the board at the next board meeting on the suggestions for the Russell County GIS system fee. As a, a number 11 under the county administrator request is, we have got a Virginia Housing Letter of Support for a grant, another grant, in this time for the Dainte Community Area. This is an application through the Cumberland Plateau Housing Authority and partnered with the Russell County Board Supervisors. Again, this is an application for a grant for a housing project within Dainte. I need approval for the Virginia Housing Letter of Support.
Need a motion for that, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll make the motion, we approve this letter of support, authorize signature, I mean, chairman is saying that.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Do we have, have a second?
Yeah, I'll see.
All right, David, are any discussion? Are all those in favor of this letter of support for the Dainte Housing Authority? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, all right.
Ma'am, number 12 is the dates for the Christmas parade and the board, so that concludes the Russell County Administrator Reports request.
Okay, with that being said, Steve, right now, but our next board meeting is the Monday, and it is the day of the Christmas parade, so...
And the Christmas parade is six o'clock.
It's six o'clock.
So, to avoid, I know there's probably people for, be at Christmas, right?
Right.
And here, but they like to do both.
What are you talking about?
They like to do both, so, but how about the 8th, the next day?
Okay.
Which would be a Tuesday.
Mr. Brady, that's actually Cleveland's parade.
That's Cleveland's parade, too?
Cleveland Parade is 8th, the day after 11th.
Well, how about going to the, the night, Wednesday? Anybody, any discussion with that? So, when we adjourn, we'll make sure that we change our board meeting to that date. Or you want to go ahead and do it now, Steve, while you've got a calendar out there?
The 9th, the 9th, stand to me, so everybody knows.
Anybody else, uh...
Yeah, ever, is it?
You okay?
Yes.
All right. I'll make the motion that we reschedule our December board meeting on the 7th to the 9th, which is Wednesday, 6 o'clock.
Same, all right.
I'll see.
All right, second, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
We will get paid. All right, now we need to go back into closed session. Saying, we made a motion, read all that in, and start the meeting.
And Chair, I'd like to make a motion, if we go into closed session, discuss legal matters pursuant to section 2.2-3711A1, discussing concerning, discussions concerning personnel matters of county employees.
Steve, do we have a second?
Second, okay.
Oh, go ahead, Horace.
Horace, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
And we will go back into closed session.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, Steve made a motion, come out of empty session, 10 seconds. Lonzo, if you'll read, please.
Let's see if the two pull mine out.
This is certification of closed session pursuant to subsection 2.2-3712D Code of Virginia 1950 as amended. Each member of the Board of Supervisors upon roll call certifies to that to the best of their knowledge, only in public business matters lawfully exempted from the open media requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and only such public business matters... and only such public business matters that were identified in the motions by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the Board Supervisors. Any member of the Board Supervisors who believes that there was a departure from the requirements shall say so prior to the vote indicated the substance of the departure, and his or her judgment has taken place. Are there any supervisors who believe that a departure has taken place? Since being done, if you agree that the matters heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting were pursuant only to the motions by which the closed meeting was convened, please signify by saying yea or yes. Tim Lovelace?
Yes.
Luann Wallace?
Yes.
Carl Ray?
Yes.
Steve Brady?
Yes.
David Eaton?
Yes.
Ours Christian?
Yes.
And Rebecca Dunn?
Yes.
Ma'am, you have approval to return to record session.
All right, next thing we have here is any matters presented by the board. David?
Yes, well, I would like to make a motion that we advertise for an assistant emergency management director, full-time position, and let JS Powers and Lonzo Lester put the job description together in regards to this position to assist our emergency management coordinator, is that right, or director?
Assistant manager.
You're the director or coordinator?
I'm the coordinator.
Coordinator. So would it be an assistant emergency management coordinator?
It'd be a deputy.
Deputy?
Deputy.
Okay, I'd like to rephrase, it's a deputy?
Emergency management.
Emergency management coordinator? If you could document that, I just restated that, thank you.
David, the director is a board member that's been appointed by the board.
Oh, I.
Or it can be the county administrator, but it has to go to the board, be approved through the board.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
I'm just a coordinator, I'm the field guy.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I stated this right, correctly, for your help, to help you in your position. Is that right? Okay, and you guys can work on the job description and put it out there to advertise, okay?
Sub move.
And Steve, second, sir?
Let me, I'm going to.
Carl, then, okay.
We have discussion?
Yes, we have discussion.
That's not, that's not having anything to do with changing this company?
No, sir. No.
I'm sorry, Carl, I didn't hear you, so, Steve, I'm pulling that back from you, sir. I did, he's gonna second it from Carl.
Steve, I think I've got it too, I just, just taking another step.
I can't hear, I can't hear Carl.
I can hear you, I'm all right.
There was two.
And I apologize to y'all, I can't either. All right, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of this job description advertising for the deputy coordinator? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, Steve, you have any matter to discuss?
Ma'am, okay. I'm, no, I apologize, Madam Chair, I've got, I want to thank the board for tonight. As far as the budgeting for the turkeys, and I know we got, we were able to give those extra turkeys out this year and that extra funding, I want to thank the staff, and Lonzo, and Vicki, and everybody that works in the county offices for working hard on these PPE grants and all this money. And I know it's an addition, a load, but I really think it's helping our local businesses. I have one more thing, I called Lonzo and I sent it to Tim and Carl. I've got a drainage problem up there where the machine tool operation is in Torch Creek, or Casey Down. And I gave the directions, Lonzo has the information, and Tim and Carl is going to talk to the VDOT. I talked to the lady today, and the way that this is up there, it's, it's like the drain pipes are pulled away from each other. And it's got two big caverns or holes that's kind of dilled in the road. I'm afraid somebody's, whether it be private property or state property or on the right of way, gets causing issues for VDOT. It's washed out, it's just coming out on the road, get the gravel. I'm afraid somebody might have an accident. But I do appreciate you guys and county administrators for going out. One of the other things I know Mr. Powers works consistently on is, and I think we've got more of a problem than this when we realize it's homeless people. Sunday on my way to church, I encountered a homeless person. And luckily, they were there at Broadbrookers Church, and they pulled over, and the deputy had done pulled him over once and asked him, did he need any assistance? He said, no, he was trying to make his way to Taffet County. But he was homeless, and I don't know how this COVID-19 money works, but we are in desperate need of a shelter, homeless shelter, here in this area region. Somewhere, I think, where we would have accessibility to maybe put some of these people. But I just wanted to say that to give the board enough time to, I guess, kind of think about that. I think we've got more of a problem than we realize here in southwest Virginia. And if there's a way that we can look at this a little deeper and maybe come up with a solution, I guess, working with JS, you know, in regards to this, and I know you work on it constantly.
We can cover it, 18 people a month.
18 a month now?
Be an average, yes.
If there's anything that we can look at as far as taking some of this COVID-19 money, and I don't know, I don't know the answer to it, but I want us to be able to kind of look into that a little bit and see if there's some resources there to give them at least a meal and some accommodations until, and we're getting ready to go into winter, and it's going to get fairly cold, I reckon, it's cold out there right now, extremely cold. And I don't know where these people are going to have a place to shelter at, but I know JS puts them up when he can, and when he finds out about it, he takes action. But it'd be nice if we had a, had a place or facility. And that's all I have, Madam.
Steve?
I would say that there's a whole subculture of homeless people. And it's tied probably to the recovery community, addiction community. They, they just float from spot to spot, they really don't have a place of their own. They'll stay with this person for a while, and this person for a while, until they wear out their wealth and move here. It's just, and you don't, you're not aware of it until you get involved in the recovery process, so. There's, there's a need for transitional housing. I know, down at the Methodist Church, we're convenient, we, we get people coming by there all the time. I've taken, I've picked people up there, taken them out, gotten them a motel, you know, just passed through.
Right.
So it, it's an issue, and I, I don't know that there's, other than the floaters that I talked about, that there's, there's really that many people that reside here in Russell County, of those people, that most of them are just trans, just kind of passing through like the one that you saw. And, and at one time, southwest Virginia, United West southwest Virginia, many, many years ago, we had a homeless shelter, and it was over in Oklahoma State Bishop's School. But it was a constant nightmare as far as trying to staff it and administer it and take care of it. So, you know, it's something, it's something we had talked about here at a, at a session one time, and still we're pursuing, but there, there's a lot of drawbacks to the two. That's it.
Thank you, Steve. Carl?
No, Madam Chair.
You?
No, ma'am.
Carl, Carlos?
Yes, I've been approached by a couple of citizens that see if the county had any buildings, at least like a hundred, hundred and fifty foot long and fifty, seventy-five foot wide. They want to have a place to let kids come and have parties and have a gang room, like kind of like Hurricane over here. They want to set this up. Then another one wants a larger facility for an option house, probably like two hundred and fifty wide, two hundred and fifty long. And I thought I didn't know, I just played before the poll, and I didn't know if we had anything like that, that the leash had been out at the county home. Things like that, get back for the Lonzo.
Absolutely, sir.
Be in charge of that thing.
Absolutely. And just, just to go back on the housing issue real quick, as y'all heard the letter on the Dainte, on the housing committee, that's, that's one component. Also in the paper, a couple of weeks ago, you see Rebecca Dunn, myself, and Tony Doughty, that was part of the Virginia Department of Housing. There is a component that they're putting in for a major grant for housing for the homeless. Now, the transit demographics is a little different. You know, we're, we're trying to get housing for the Russell County citizens, but the transit is a, is a total different shelter, so we'll, we'll look into that too. Morgan Brifett's working on that, and that's where the Secretary of Housing came down from the feds that we had out here that told me had a bracket, and there's multiple units in it. Now, that'll be for Russell County citizens, but that transit unit is a different population.
There, there's, there is a need for low-income housing.
Yes.
Is that what, what they're looking, they're looking?
Yes, sir, yes, they are. They're looking for low, low, and they're partnering with Covering Plateau Housing Authority, yes, and the town of Lebanon undertaking that themselves, which is a good project.
Anything that would put that building, get used, clean it up a little bit, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, the, that was a good partnership with the town of Lebanon and VDA, Virginia Department of Housing.
Lu, do you have anything you'd like to speak about?
Well, the only thing that I want to say is thank you to the board tonight for voting for the Virginia Housing Authority to start a pilot project in the community of Dainte, Virginia, concerning workforce development and workforce housing. I appreciate that very much. And that's about all I need to say, I just appreciate your all's support, thank you.
Thank you. All right, with that being said, we do want to remind folks, we did change our next board meeting till Wednesday, December the ninth, right here to accommodate for the two, excuse me. Excuse me, two Christmas parades. All right, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make it, second.
David, and second is Steve. All those in favor?
Uh, this being.
I'll adjourn.